All right, it is 6:30 on June 25th, and I am calling this meeting to order. We have a full dais, and as authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The city of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or call the executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. So, I've called the meeting to order. We're moving on to item number two, and we have two young people with us today. We have Audrey Chan. Audrey, if you'll come forward and turn around, everyone wants to see you. Audrey's in sixth grade. She is homeschooled by her mom. She's been homeschooled for about four years, and she wants all her friends to know that she has just as much homework as the kids that go to regular school. And her little brother, Aiden. Aiden, come on up and stand by your sister. This is Aiden, and Aiden is about in the third grade, and he too is homeschooled. And I asked him what his favorite subject was, and he said "summer." So, he is very excited right now. And although Audrey's only in the sixth grade, she's thinking she might want to be an artist, and it sounds like in the fall, with her homeschooling curriculum, it will include art. So, she's very excited to start her art classes. These two young people are going to lead us in the pledges. If everyone will please rise. Okay, you guys can turn around, put your hands over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, where we have your allegiance to thee, Texas, with them state, under God, one and indivisible.
Can we give these two young people a round of applause? And if you guys will turn around, I'm confident that my press friends are going to take your picture. So, while they're doing that, the reason that these young people are here, they were chosen by our interim librarian, Bonnie Pearson, and they are both participating, one more, in the summer program. And I know that Audrey has over 800 minutes logged in the summer reading program, and they are both looking forward to the big game day that is on July 9th. It'll be from 1 to 4 at the Convention Center. Last year, they had human-sized foosball, which was awesome, and big bowling, and all kinds of good stuff. So, please look for these folks at the big game day, and let's give them another round of applause. And if you will remain standing, the police chaplain, Dale Burke, will lead us in our invocation tonight. Chaplain Burke, and you guys can go back with Mom and Dad.
Would you bow your heads, please? Heavenly Father, it's just so refreshing to come here and pray over a city council here that, Lord, is so blessed. This city of Bastrop is blessed by you. And Father, it takes a council coming together with the meeting the needs of this city with your wisdom and guidance to do it. So, Lord, I thank you tonight. I pray for Mayor Schrader, the city manager, and each council member here. Lord, that you give them wisdom as we go ahead in all of the activities that we have coming here with the celebration of the Patriotic Festival, the Fourth of July, all the different things that we have here, Lord, and celebrating different communities, different people coming together in the community. Lord, all the actions that are done through the coalition groups, coming together to make this a stronger city. So, Lord, I thank you for the anointing that's upon each one of our council members tonight, and all the decisions they make, and we thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Burke. You may all be seated. We don't have any proclamations tonight, so we'll start with the mayor's report. And the first thing that I have to be thankful for is for the rain yesterday, that one inch over the day, and when it's late June and we're getting rained, I know that our landscaping certainly appreciates that very much. Colin, I'm ready to go on my mayor's report. The upper left-hand corner, you'll see that I went to the bipartisan pancake breakfast. It was great to see everybody. It was held out at Community Gardens and had a great time later that same morning at the Healthy Kids Day. And you'll see the summer reading. Their theme this year is a universe of stories, so there's lots of rocket ships and different things going on, just a great time. At our last council meeting, there was a presentation about the pop-up event, and I had included a few pictures about that. The other item I'd like to bring everyone's attention to is the Second Annual Strong Families event that was held out at the Housing Authority. They were recruiting kids to join the military. They had the van that had, where the kids could go inside and play the different video games. And they also gave shoes out to kids that might be needing shoes. It was for kids and adults. And then, the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and Council Member Rogers and I all went to the TML Region 10 meeting that was held out at Typhoon, Texas, in Flugerville. So, it was a good time. We enjoyed that and learned things like we always do. You go over to the next page. You'll see in the planned events, I want to apologize for not making the Juneteenth parade. The plane, by the time we landed, the parade was over, but I heard that the car show was awesome, and I'm counting on Council Member Peterson to give us a little more information about that. And I also want to let folks know that the annual joint visit Bastrop City Council meeting was rescheduled, and I believe, I don't think we have a firm date set yet, but we expect that to be mid-July. On upcoming events, want to remind everyone that tomorrow at the Bastrop Opera House, at 3:30, we're having a come-and-go for the developers. At 6:30, we're having a come-and-go for the public. This is for our building Bastrop codes that were made public on May 24th, and we're encouraging folks to come tell us what they like. But more importantly, if there's anything they have a problem with, or if they have suggestions for us, that would be very much appreciated. And council, I know it's on your calendars, but I want to remind you that our next council meeting is on July 9th, and we will start at 4:30 with a joint workshop with planning and zoning. And that is my mayor's report. Council Member Jackson, do you have anything to report?
Oh, no, just, um...
Council Member Ennis.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor Nelson.
Just real quick, yesterday, we were, we used the term fortunate to attend the legislative update from TML to look at what the legislature has brought us for the upcoming years. It was very much a learning experience, and I appreciate having our city attorney there to help interpret some of the myriad of facts that were presented there.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Council Member Rogers?
Well, I went to the liaison for the Main Street, but I know they're on our agenda, so I'm going to let Rebecca report to that for you.
Great. And that's everything. Council Member Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To start it off here, I want to thank everybody for the successful Juneteenth celebration. We had a great time over the weekend, and the car show was super great. We had a little over 100 cars, and believe now, we had more spectators than we had cars. So, it was a great turnout. So, I just want to thank the city of Bastrop and all its departments, you know, Public Works, PTL, the Police Department. I want to thank y'all so very much for making the weekend a great, great success. And last but not least, I want to thank the staff at the Convention and Exhibit Center. They went above and beyond. They were very, very attentive to everything that happened over there, and anything we needed, they make sure that everyone, unless everyone, had a good time. So, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and I'm sure everyone wants to thank you for all the hard work you put into that car show. It's successful every year, and I know there's literally a lot of your own blood, sweat, and tears that goes into that, so. And we're glad that worked out okay. All right, council, city manager, do you have anything to report? All right, council, we're moving on to page two. Our first item is item 5A, review and update on international building codes, construction standards review process and impact from House Bill 2439. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and this is just that, it's just kind of an update on where we are with the I-code review with the Construction Standards Board. It's been at least a few weeks since you all adopted that purpose statement, so we just wanted to give you a brief update of where we are today. So, again, the purpose statement, review national best practices and establish locally amended life safety expectations that protect our public and ensure the asset meets or exceeds its useful life. So, we took that, and this is what kind of what we're doing. So, here's a complete collection of the 2018 I-codes. Out of the 15, we're going to do 12. We were informed that there was actually a piece of legislation that was passed at the state this summer, that now we have to do a 13th. That would be the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. So, we'll actually be taking a look at that one also as we move through this process. So, as I said, these were the proposed codes. We were going to do 12 of the 15. We've added the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code to this list, and this is the list that we'll be reviewing and have already started reviewing with the Construction Standards Board. So, House Bill 2439, so what is it? And it's essentially a piece of legislation that strips the local control from municipalities and says that we are no longer allowed to rig building materials. So long as that building material is a material that's in the model codes, so the I-codes or some of the other national codes, and it actually predates it three code cycles. So, any building material that was allowed in the I-codes or model codes the past three renditions is we have to allow, we cannot prohibit the use of that. We're still kind of taking a look at how this is going to affect us moving forward. It's a little tricky in how it uses the verbiage. For example, it only restricts it in a residential building or commercial building, and doesn't really say structure. So, we're still kind of working out the details on that, on whether or not it, you know, regulates sign materials, for example, because that's not really a building, it's more of a structure. So, we're still working through this. It was only passed on June 14th. It does not go into effect until September 1. Thankfully, they did give us some lead time on this one to get it figured out, so we'll be working with our city attorney as we look at this and see how it will affect us moving forward with the I-codes. So, kind of here we are in the process and our timeline, so we reviewed the purpose statement with you all. We have sent the codes out to the Construction Standards Board, and we're in the process of reviewing the codes now with the Construction Standards Board. They've had a couple of meetings. This is the schedule, so we're still not too far in it. These will not be considered before you all. There's a joint meeting November 5th would be when they make their recommendations to you all. So, we still have a few meetings to work through as we review the different I-codes. Two dates to point out that are important are August 6th is a development community input. That's going to be the first one, where we're going to invite the entire development community and tell them what we're doing. This is what we've seen thus far. What do you think? Where does it affect you? And then, the second being October 10th, 2019, and that's the second one. That's important because it is before they come up with their final recommendations at their October 24th meeting, so we wanted to make sure that we gave ample opportunity to hear from our development community prior to them making a formal recommendation to you all. So, again, this is kind of where we're through. This is how we've broken them down. So, you see, our next meeting is July 2nd, and then we'll work from there. And then, October 24th, after that second public input meeting, they'll make recommendations at that November 5th joint work session, and then you all, it's scheduled to be adopted at city council in November, on November 12th and 26th. So, that is where we're at to date. We're actually making pretty good progress. You all did a good job of putting different representatives on that board from different, you know, trade groups and home builders, and so we're getting some good feedback and working through that process. So, that's where we are to date, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Council, any questions for Mr. Jones? Council Member Rogers?
Yes, I was, you said you had to act the three cycles.
Yes.
So, do they, are those each year? Did they seem every five years?
Three years, so it's...
So, they did see it every three? I wasn't sure if it was a yearly process, or if it was the...
Yes, so it would be eight, so the codes come out every three years. So, it would be anything allowed in 2018, 2015, or 2012 at this point.
Oh, so three actual cycles of three years?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, that's why I said, you said three cycles. I want to know how long their cycles were.
Yes, so they, those come out, the I-codes come out.
They publish a set of books, right? And it's like the 2012 edition kind of thing?
Right.
Right, I just didn't know how often they did them, so I'm not sure how to...
Every three years for the I-codes. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yeah, the staff's commitment to undertake this process is lawful. I really appreciate y'all doing that. But for the benefit of our audience, as well as those people listening at home, could you provide us with the criteria that y'all are, that y'all put in place for your review?
Yeah, absolutely. So, everything that we've done really falls back to your purpose statement. So, the I-codes are the national model codes, the best practices that have been stepped forth, embedded through the International Code Council, and they've been produced, and they've been put out for review and also for adoption. So, we're going to go with the 2018. Right now, we're under 2009, so it's been a few years since we've adopted new codes, so we're almost 20 years behind, or 10 years, excuse me. So, this is really the purpose statement that you've adopted. We've always gone back to this, and so when something comes up, we know it's national best practice because it's in the I-code. But then, if it's something that may not meet Bastrop, or maybe geographic insensitive, we look to that. And some things, you know, we have a representative from a local home builder, a national home builder, and like window standards, for example, there's a U-code or a U-value that a window must meet, and it changed a few tenths of a point to where you now have to have a .32 window instead of a .35. And, you know, what is the additional cost of that? So, we went and looked at to make sure you can get that window at our local home building stores, right? We didn't want to have something in our codes that local home builders could not go to our local home improvement stores and buy off the shelves. But in looking at that, there is a little bit of cost to that, but when you go back to meets or exceeds the life of the asset, it's worth it. So, and how we've explained it to our, the board is, you know, builders, developers, everybody are our customer one time, and then our customer, for the rest of the lifespan of that, is a resident, not the first-time buyer, not the second time, but maybe the third or fourth. And if we get our codes right, that fourth customer will still have a product that is useful. And so, that's really how we've been going through those codes.
Well, y'all have established a set of criteria, I want to say five different sets of evaluation criteria that I think should, that bears mentioning.
I'm sorry, what's the question? Did I totally miss the question?
So, back when we presented this the first time, we had a purpose statement?
Yes.
And then, you had a series of things that, when staff read the books, they vetted against.
It was in your staff report?
I do not have my staff report in front of me, so I apologize.
Oh, you're, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I think, I think it's critically important...
Sorry, yes, my apologies.
The criteria that y'all set is excellent.
Yes, yes, my apologies, yes. So, going back to the first one prior to the purpose statement, so does it meet our purpose statement, which I just kind of explained? I don't need to go over that one with the customer. I actually did just explain. Does it make common sense? That's one that we've looked at. Real quick example, one of the requirements is when you have a crawl space and you have any like HVAC or furnace equipment under there, it actually requires you, when you replace it, to fireproof the entire floor. And some, sometimes we don't think that that makes practical sense. More common sense approach might be fireproofing the area right above the equipment. Instead of maybe a homeowner, their furnace goes out in the winter, and they come in to pull a permit, and we say, "I'm sorry, you have to rip the decking out on your entire house and replace it." So, we thought maybe it would be more appropriate just to do the fireproofing above the actual mechanical equipment. So, that's kind of the common sense approach we're taking. Can we legally enforce it? One of the things would be like the 2439, how does that affect us? We'll clearly vet that with the city attorney. And then, what does that look like as, from a staffing standpoint? How much staff are we going to have to not only review those plans but enforce them? How long does it take to do each inspection versus, you know, the staff that we have? Certainly, anything that's life safety, we'll be doing, but some of those other common sense things, like the swimming pool and spa code, a lot of that's covered under the plumbing code, so it could be a little bit redundant. It does refer to each other. That's a good thing about adopting all of them in their entirety. But again, how will those be inspected and reviewed goes back to it, so.
Great.
Sorry about that, I was not following you.
Excellent job, Mr. Jones. And I really appreciate all of the hard work you and staff have done, but I would be remiss if I didn't also thank the Construction Standards Board. That's a board that went for a while with not meeting at all.
2016 was the last time they met.
And we have, we have more than made up for it.
Yes.
So, I want to thank them personally for the, for the hard work they're putting in. And to your point, I happen to know someone that was on the board in 2016, and it was a big deal to even get to the 2009 codes. It had been a long time before they had, since they had been updated.
Sure.
So, hats off to the Construction Standards Board, a group of volunteers that are making decisions that'll impact all of us.
Sure.
Mayor, can I ask him one more question?
Absolutely.
When's Home Goods opening?
Oh, you're going to spoil my later presentation.
He has a monthly update. Okay, okay, okay. I'll wait, I'll wait.
You're jumping ahead, jumping ahead. That's 6A. He'll tell you that's 6A. Any other question for Mr. Jones on the I-codes?
Thank you, y'all.
Great presentation, Matt, thank you. All right, council, we're on item 5B, review rules of procedure for the city of, for city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, and I'll be making the presentation on this one. I know I asked you not too long ago if you would please take a few moments to review it. For those of you at home, it looks like this. It's official, and the last time that it was approved, it was July 24th of 2018. I found five areas that need to be updated, and if you don't mind, I'll go through those quickly, and then, well, let me start with, did anybody have anything that they wanted to change in the procedures? Oh, Council Member Rogers has her, let's, you go first, Council Member Rogers.
Well, it's not so much that there were areas that I wanted to change, it was more that maybe it might not be clear to me, so just thought I would ask a couple of questions. In the section 2.4, the regular meetings, I know a couple times, like our next meeting is going to start early, and it, here it tells us that we have to vote on that.
The meeting that starts early is the workshop at 4:30. Our regular meeting is still at 6:30.
Right, but several times, we've started at 4:30 to go in executive session in the past.
And when we've done that, we've tried to make sure that the agenda's clear, that the regular meeting is starting at 6:30.
Okay.
So, we try to handle that in the agenda so that the call to order for the regular meeting is 6:30.
Oh, I understand. I was just saying that it says here that if you're going to change it to vote, I didn't know if it needed to rework. I don't mind starting early. I wasn't trying to say that, I was just making sure.
So, I think the distinction, Council Member, is to the mayor's point, when you start at the 6:30, you've not violated this.
Oh, okay, all right. That's why I was just making sure we were, I was just making sure we were covered.
No, no, I appreciate that.
And I have one question under the 3.2, the model format, section 8, when it says discuss the motion, you know, you take a vote, then somebody's, or you take a motion, someone's seconded.
Yes.
And the way this is worded, can I only discuss the motion that someone has stated, or can I still discuss the subject?
So, that is a great one, and let's, if you don't mind, let's go back on page 7 and talk about, and it's the model for an agenda item, and let's kind of walk through it real quick. So, I, we're on page 3, section 3.1, it's on page 7. So, we would, I will announce the item. We'll receive a report from staff.
Right.
Council can ask staff a question about their report. Then, if anyone has signed up to speak for that item, they will come and speak on that item. Council can ask the citizens if they have any specific question, and at that point, we got to have a motion and a second, or there's nothing to discuss.
Right, I understand.
So, if the motion is to approve or to deny, it, we have to have a motion and a second, and once we have a second, you can, you can say, "Well, Lyle made a motion to approve it, and I, and I'm going to vote against this because I think it's a horrible idea." So, you can talk about it however you want.
Okay, that's what I want to make clear. I said discuss just that motion, so I want to make sure I can still discuss the whole subject of what we're voting on.
The whole subject, because you might be trying to persuade people to vote against the motion that got a second, or you might be trying to support the motion that you made.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
And one, I'm glad that you brought up that section. One thing I want to clarify with our city attorney is, it is my understanding that once the motion has been made and seconded, that discussion is a debate on the dais, and so at that point, there is no more citizen input. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, if citizens, citizens have an opportunity to have input, but it would be after the staff report and before debate of the item on the dais. So, just clarifying.
Now, question, now that you ask that, I mean, if, during our debate, if we came up with another question, could we go back and ask the staff a question?
It's our meeting, yes, we can.
Okay, all right, just making sure of this.
Absolutely. Because the goal, for those of you at home and those of you in the audience, the whole goal is for council to have the very best information to make a good decision together. So, if, if you repeat something that staff said, and Mr. Peterson says, "Well, wait a minute, I don't think that's what Matt said," then Matt's going to come clarify so that we all have the very best information to make a good decision.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
And my next one, or my next input was on page 14.
Okay.
It was about when we're asking for the citizens to sign up. I didn't know if we should maybe put that...
Yeah, we're going to revise that.
I just wanted to put it in bold.
Well, we're going to, we're going to revise that based on a new law.
All right, so.
Anything else?
And the, on page 16, is, there's a section, it's on page 16, but it's actually part of 4.10 on the executive session.
Yes.
It says that we'll agree what can be shared to public prior to, so, I mean, usually, we don't discuss anything that we discuss in executive session to the public, so I just was curious on what, why that was there.
And the point is, if there is a time in executive session, that it's like, okay, the attorney shared some information with us, now that we have that information, if any of that can be shared in public, that we would clarify that, come out and share whatever we can.
Okay, I was going to say, usually, we don't share anything.
To your point, it's not very often.
Okay, all right.
Because if we can have a public discussion, we're not in executive session, but if, if we can, we want to be as open as we can. That's the intent of that sentence.
All right, sorry, I'm asking too many questions.
No, you're not at all.
Last page is on 17 about the council liaison.
I'm going to take care of those, too.
Oh, well, I was going to say, it says that they don't have to show up. I think I would like the council to show up for a percentage of meetings, not just...
Ah.
Says we don't ever have to go, how can we be a liaison if we're not at the meetings?
That's awesome. We can talk about that.
You know, maybe at least 50% or something. I mean, if you're not going, what good are you?
So, council, she is referring to page 17, Article 6.
Sorry.
It's the fourth sentence, and it says, "Council liaisons may attend but are not required to attend the meeting of the boards or commissions to which they have been appointed as liaison." And she is suggesting, if you're the liaison, you need to be at the meetings, or maybe at a certain percentage. So, I'm open to input. The city manager's taking notes, and they'll bring, she'll bring us back something to approve, so do you guys want to say mostly? You got to have a really good reason? You want to say 80%? What do you want to? I'm open to suggestions.
I agree that you should try to make all the meetings you can, but who's going to govern this is the problem, and who are we going to get excused absence from if you can't be there for some reason?
So, it may be one that we...
I want to be clear, it won't be me, sir.
I was thinking, and it's not going, it's not going to be me either, but maybe, what if the verbiage is that the council, council liaison should make every effort to attend all the meetings, or something, something like that? Council Member Jackson?
That's what I was going to suggest. I mean, I think if you're going to be the liaison for a board or a commission, you should be in attendance at those meetings, but from time to time, there may be times when a person can't attend. So, some type of verbiage similar to what you just stated, I think would be appropriate.
Counsel, are you comfortable with the liaison should make every effort to attend the meetings? All right. Okay, she put her book down. She's done. Anybody else on this side? Any, any changes or comments on this side? Any, Councilmember Ennis?
I would like to see us, we have heretofore, and this may be on your list, not allowed citizens' comments at workshops.
Yeah, we're, that, the law took care of that. We have to allow that.
Well, my suggestion was going to be that we do allow it, but we put it at a particular time period of the meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. That is referenced several different times. I have it in section 2.7 on page 5. I have it in section 2.13 on page 7. Section 4.5 on page 14. Yes, city manager, I'll give you a copy of this. And I am suggesting that it, currently it says that citizens' comments won't be taken unless previously posted. The law that's passed says they can comment on anything, that we can have reasonable rules about it. And I was going to suggest that citizen comments and questions will be considered at the end of the prepared presentation, so that staff can get through their presentation. And when you're not starting to ask questions before somebody's had an, an opportunity to finish their sentence. Is that agreeable to you, Councilmember Ennis? You lost your mic.
I would recommend that we do it at the end of our questions, because there might be some comments directed towards staff or our comments.
So you would prefer let staff present, let council ask staff, staff questions, and then have citizen comments?
We normally ask questions during the presentation.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
But that's up to everybody else. That's my thought.
My, my point was that I, I think it's okay for council to ask questions, but I didn't want to try to have, keep track of citizens asking questions during the presentation.
No, you're right.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson?
I was just, we talked about this earlier tonight. You spoke about citizens commenting after the motion has been made and after the information. And my question and concern, I guess, was if, for instance, we are discussing a certain agenda item, and new information comes up, if the citizens have made attention to, new to the discussion comes up, I was concerned that the citizens might need to be allowed to speak at that time, instead of being cut off completely at that time. Especially if there's something new that's brought to the agenda item, new to the discussion, to make sure that they are included and not just dismissed because they had a certain time to speak.
Well, we're talking about work sessions, correct? Not agenda voting items, is that right? Is that what we're, that's the subject?
Right now, we're talking about work sessions.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to.
Yeah, but I was going back to what we discussed earlier, so I, I regressed a little bit.
Oh, no, it's fine. I just want to make sure I understood the conversation.
Other comments, counsel?
The same, the, the same process that we, that we utilize for, for meetings, our regular council meetings, should be utilized for this, just for consistency. And that, and this is a simple change on 2.7, is that, that audience comments and questions will be considered a work session as posted. I think that would make it really quite easy.
And then from a process, do you want them to ask questions at the end of the presentation? Or just at some point, or anywhere along the way? Or what would process-wise?
Well, the process would be that we'd have staff presentations, we'd have the discussion between council and the staff, and then we allow for the public comment.
Okay, and I think that comment confirms what Councilmember Ennis suggested.
And for clarification, I don't think the law makes a distinction between work session and regular agenda items. So the, just for my clarification, the process y'all are describing would be inserted under workshops, and would be the same language that would then be inserted in a regular session, correct?
Yes, I, I think so. The city attorney told me that workshop is not a legal term. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's not a term that appears in the Open Meetings Act at all. And so it's either a part of a regular meeting, or it constitutes a special meeting. And city manager's right, this provision does not distinguish between a work session or a regular meeting. What it does distinguish between is an open meeting, well, specifically uses the term open meeting. So this new requirement that citizens be allowed to speak on any agenda item, either before or during the council's consideration of that item, is limited to items that are listed for open meeting. So my interpretation is, if an item is listed solely as an executive session item, this new rule doesn't apply.
But whether we're voting or not, they have an opportunity to speak on the agenda item?
If it's an open session agenda item, yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
So, question, Mr. City Attorney. How do we differentiate, just in the wording of the announcement, between a non-voting meeting and a voting meeting?
You can do it that way. We, we can keep using the term work session if we want to. We can still keep conveying to the public that we will talk about an item, but no action will be taken. They still have a choice whether or not they want to watch, or listen, or show up.
I, I feel like the agenda, the way it exists is fairly clear, because the work session items say, review, hear presentation, those type of words. And our individual consideration items not only clear, say, individual consideration, but they also start out with consider action to approve, deny. So I think we've, we've made it clear of the things that we're voting on and the things we're not voting on.
I, I got lost, so let me do this again.
Sorry.
It was clear until Mayor Protim Nelson asked for the clarification. I don't think the law cares whether or not you vote or not. I think all it cares is whether or not it is a legal meeting that is posted to the public. So help connect the dots that I missed, between his question and your answer, and whether or not we take action is irrelevant as to whether or not people can participate in the conversation. Correct?
That is true. What, what you stated is correct. My understanding was, the question was, how do we communicate to the public whether it's going to be an action item or just a discussion item?
Got you.
And I think the mayor's summary is accurate. We do use different word choices on our agenda, in addition to saying work session versus something else.
And then you are also clarifying that we are within the law to not take citizen comment on executive session items.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Ennis, did you have anything else?
Well, I want to hear what you have to say first, because you may cover everything I had to say.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson, did you have any comments?
Not at this time. I wanted, since this is my first full meeting, I wanted to kind of observe a lot more. And in the words of Hamilton, talk less, listen more.
So on the workshops, I'm back on 2.7. The, right now, the sentence says, "Audience comments or questions will not be considered at a work session unless posted for citizen comment." I think that is now not compliant with the law that has recently been passed. I think it would be helpful if we clarified to the audience that their comments will be after the presentation and after council has had an opportunity to ask a few questions. And so, city manager, I'll let you wordsmith that. Is anyone opposed to that? Okay, then the.
Is that really necessary?
To clarify?
To say when it's going to be?
So the point of these rules and procedure are to provide process. And I think what I would say to you is, we can meet the intent of the law 60 different ways. But I think by providing a process, then you explain to the public that, yes, they can participate, but only under these conditions and when. And I think that that provides some guidance for your presiding officer, the mayor, to be consistent in the application of that, so that you're not perceived as playing favorites.
Okay, thanks.
I knew I was doing that self-servingly, and so I appreciate the city manager saying that. I, I got to know what the rules are, so I'm, I am consistent. 2.13 is on page 7. And at the top of the page, 2.13 is minutes of the meeting. And it says that the secret, city secretary will keep the meeting minutes for the city council. I think it would be helpful if we said that the staff liaison will keep the meeting minutes for the boards and commissions. They do already, but I, I don't like it implying that the city secretary would be doing that. So I thought it would be helpful to add that. Is anyone opposed to adding that clarification? Councilmember Jackson?
The rules of procedure for city council is what this topic is about. It doesn't mention anything about the other group.
But the boards and, this is the rules and procedures for all of council? And we'll, we address boards and commissions as well? So like, since it's meeting minutes, I was just going to throw that. And if we want to put it in a different section, we can. But I was just trying to clarify that.
Actually, on that same thing, I was going, wondering if we could title it city council and board, you know, because I remember last year, you wanted all the boards to follow this. So maybe we should title it council and city boards, or something, if you're wanting them to go by these rules.
It actually references the boards and commissions in here.
Right, which is why I wanted to add that to 2.13. Because 1.2 says that, under applicability on page 4, says, "The rules of procedure adopted by the city council are applicable not only to city council, but also to all boards, commissions, and committees." That's why I didn't want the minutes of the meeting to be confused, that the city secretary had to keep boards and commission minutes.
So, may I, because technically, the wording is correct. She doesn't take them, she keeps them. So she is the repository of all of the minutes. So when she shall keep meetings of all proceedings, including the boards and commissions, that is a true and factual statement. She is the official custodian.
Okay.
So there probably needs to be a distinction between keeping and taking.
And taking, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to, to clarify that, if we could. Okay, so that took care of that one, that took care of that one. We've talked about the. Yeah.
I still had a question. So since this, you know, this booklet is called Rules of Procedure for the City Council, since we're discussing the boards and commissions, would it not be appropriate to change that a little bit? Are you saying that because it's, boards and commissions are following under the same process as the city council?
If you look on page 4, at 1.2, it has the applicability, and it says that it applies to all the boards and commissions. It's on page 4. Article 1, section 2, point 2, 1.2.
Okay.
So the work sessions, we've talked about cleaning up that verbiage. Then on 4.7, on page 14, this is in, it's funny how every time you read it, you read things just a tiny bit different. At this time, three-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. What we have normally done is citizen comments are only for items that are not on the agenda, because otherwise the comments are on the agenda item. So we have not done this. Is this written that way for legal? Am I splitting hairs? And I do think we have, we, the other thing I would suggest is that we remove the, prior to the start of the council meeting. Since we adopted this rule on July 24th, we've only had three times when someone has not made it in at 6:30. And every single time, we've let them speak anyway. So if we approve the exception every time, for me, that's kind of like it's not really a rule. And city attorney, I don't know if you think the law implies that if, if that is still a reasonable rule, and we can keep that, or if you think we would be better served to not have that as a rule, based on the law?
Mayor, the recently enacted legislation doesn't touch on that specifically. It says that you have to allow them to speak on agenda items in open meetings, either before or during council's consideration of that item. It then goes on to say you can adopt reasonable rules, including rules limiting the amount of time that any one person can speak on one subject. So it gives you that one example, but that's it. I think you could have a reasonable rule that whoever's going to speak must sign up. They must sign up in advance of speaking, they must turn that in. To cap it at a certain start time, I think would be contrary to the intent of this new rule. But there's no language addressing it.
So counsel, what's your pleasure on whether you would like to keep that rule? Or if you would like to remove the prior to the start of council? Mr. Peterson, do you have a thought? You want to keep it? Councilmember Rogers?
It could keep it, it could, either way, I mean, the only thing I, I would prefer is if they're going to speak on a sub, on an agenda item, that they submit it before that agenda item starts. And not, I've seen in the past, at least not when I was sitting on the dais, but when I was sitting there, something else came up. So they ran over and gave another question, because nobody answered that question. So if you have something to say, submit it once, and not just keep running back and forth, because we're not answering the question you wanted. I don't know how to say that, but that's the only thing I, I saw the, the council had a problem with that at that time, while I was, as I was watching. So however Alan wants to word that.
Mayor Protim, do you think prior to the start of the council meeting is reasonable? Or something you'd like to strike or amend?
No, I'd prefer to keep it as it is, prior to the meeting.
Councilmember Ennis?
I'm very definitely in favor of keeping it for several reasons. It's done away with a lot of the argumentative dialogue that we had going on in previous councils. And number two is, you've done a great job, Mayor, of moving things up in the agenda when you knew there were a lot of people who wanted to address that item.
Yes, sir.
And if we do waive this rule, you're probably not going to know how many are going to address one particular item, if we do waive it.
It's beneficial to have it ahead of time. Councilmember Jackson?
Whereas I see that the timeframe is beneficial, I still think that the timeframe keeps some people from being allowed to speak, especially if they arrive late at the meeting, or if they have things that cause them not to be there at 6:30. Our citizens do work, and sometimes getting to the meeting by 6:30 is a problem. So I would not like to see the timeframe there.
So counsel, we need to let the city manager know how, how we want her to word it. We aren't voting tonight. We can have a discussion and, and vote on it at the next council meeting. One thing, one thing that we could do, for clarification, Councilmember Jackson, people can sign up from after, when the agenda is posted on Friday. So part of the thought process before had been, you've got all day Monday and all day Tuesday. It's not like you can only sign up between 6:15 and 6:30 on the day of the meeting. One of the things we could do, if the 6:30 sharp is a problem, is we could make it within the first 30 minutes of the start of the meeting, or, you know, I, I don't care. But the city manager can't bring us back something if she doesn't, if we don't give her some direction. So I, I'm going to say that for right now, it, the majority that I've heard wants to leave prior to the start of the council meeting. And I would encourage you to think about it, maybe visit with some citizens, and we can, she won't be bringing us the books. She'll be bringing us words, and we'll vote on it at the next council meeting, and then we'll finalize the books. Is that agreeable, city manager?
Yes, ma'am, but you started off talking about the ability to talk about any topic.
And then we got on to this, yeah.
And, and the reason for that is, is that citizens can bring any topic. And, and when you finish reading that statement, we go on to say that if it's not posted, you can't comment. That you can't make a decision, we can only make a factual comment. I think that language is important to state. We print that on the citizens' sign-up card, so it manages expectations.
Yeah, my concern is that, is the, at this time, because it sounds like that is the only time that they can comment. And we've been taking their comments later in the agenda at the agenda item.
No, that's not what this says. If, if you want to talk on any topic, this is the only time it is posted for you to do so. Every other time, it has to be the agenda item. So if citizens want to come and talk to you about something other than what's on the agenda, that's the only time it can happen. And this is the actual verbiage that we post, so that they understand that.
So I think then we're in violent agreement. And perhaps it should say, "Any topic not on the agenda." Because I understand it's any potential topic, knowing that we're not going to vote on it. But I think it's confusing that they may think that's the only time they can speak, when really they need to sign up at the agenda item. Okay, so, yes, sir, Councilmember Ennis?
I'm not trying to put onus on our technical staff, but would it be possible to, in deference to Councilman Jackson's comments, to have a online sign-up to speak?
We had talked about that before, and I think we're struggling with that with the age of our website.
Okay, thanks.
Not that that's not a good long-term goal, but I think right now that's.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I just had one clarification. How do they, just because I didn't know they could sign up prior to that day, so how do the citizens actually do it?
Just turn it in, turn it in at the front desk.
So they can just show up at, at the front desk and just fill it out at any time? Okay, just because I didn't have clarification, just so, I know, thank you.
Okay, and so, city manager, the second paragraph may not need to be amended, but that also mentions prior to the beginning of the meeting. So we'll see how council votes on that.
And I'm hearing consensus that y'all want to leave this, correct? So the citizen comment, the only change I hear is at this time, "Three-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic, comma, not on the agenda."
Yes, and then they may change when they vote. There's, we're, it's not over till, till there's voting. Mayor Protim Nelson?
And of course, as, as you're looking at this, Madam City Manager, we're, we're going to have to ensure that we take every step to not stifle any, any public comment, while at the same time complying with state law.
Right.
As, as, as has been foisted a bonus at this point in time. And that's, that's the wordsmithing part that's going to be very critical in this, in my mind.
Yes, because we absolutely want to hear from our citizens, but we also be, need to be able to consistently run a meeting and, and have order in the, in the chamber. The last, last comment that I had was Article 6, which is the council liaison to boards and commissions. And we don't list those appointments in this document. I guess since we review it every year, we could. But I did want to let the public know, it says here that council liaisons will be appointed by the mayor with consideration given to applicable expertise. And with Councilmember Jackson's appointment, election to the council, he is going to be the liaison for the Parks Board, based on his experience and expertise. And Mayor Protim Nelson will be the liaison for planning and zoning and construction standards. Because this is reviewed every year, the other. Because this is reviewed every year, the other thing that I thought we might need to add is that we do not have a liaison for the Hunter's Crossing Board, because we have council members that serve on that board. So, that could be added to the list of boards, along with Ethics and the Housing Authority and CBA, where we don't have a liaison, just add the Hunter's Crossing Board as well. And we review it every year, so if that changes, and we don't have a council member on it, we can have a council liaison. So, that was all of the comments that I had. Anybody else? Any other comments? And, city manager, I believe it is your intention that this is a document that we will be under individual consideration at our next council meeting. Thank you very much. Any other items on 5B, before we move on to Councilmember Rogers' favorite topic, 5C? All right, we're moving on to 5C. Oh, I was really being, I, I thought we were going to 6A. Provide an update on the chicken relocation project in downtown Bastrop.
I was gonna say, where did I get the chickens?
I know, I know. Chief Algelt, and Chief Algelt has a special guest with him tonight. We're happy to have Amy Jordan.
And I am going to kind of hijack their process. Colin, if you will move to the next slide, please. I want to take a moment, I know at the last council meeting, Chief Algelt talked about the fact that we have really put a dent in the chickens, and we think that the population is down less than 15. I make a point to, to spend a lot of time downtown on the weekends, and over the last three weekends, I've seen one rooster. So, I think we have significantly made a dent in that population. So, in our last comments with that, we are not leaving the impression that we're not going to be serious about chickens. I think it's safe to say that Amy and the police department would like nothing better than to eradicate chickens downtown, so we never have to talk about chickens. So, I want the public to appreciate that, that we are in agreement with the urgency of that matter, but we're not going to do the chicken wrangling events that we have consistently had scheduled. Amy, as a part of her duties, rides all over the community, spends a lot of time downtown, and if she sees chicks, or she sees that the population is beginning to grow, she will activate the chicken wrangling exercise, and that will be scheduled. And so, rather than it be a part of our calendar, it will be on a as-needed basis, because we think the population is, is down. So, I asked the chief if I could do this, because I want to take a minute to say a huge, huge thank you to our animal control officer, Amy Jordan. We talk about her at every meeting, but nobody has seen Amy, and this is an opportunity for us to say, "An amazing job, well done." Amy started and was very quickly initiated, much like teaching a child to swim, by throwing them in the deep end of the pool. The chief said, "You're animal control, and guess what? You get to learn to wrangle chickens." And she did it, and did it very well. And so, she has had a lot of help from not only the police department, but Public Works, and I am extraordinarily proud to say that, at the end of June, we have officially captured and relocated 251 chickens and roosters out of downtown Bastrop, and I think that deserves a round of applause. And it's important to note that we did relocate 251 chickens. So, at this point in time, I just wanted to punctuate for the public that this really is significant, excuse me, we really got reinvigorated in this process around February, and we've gone from 102 captured to 251, and that's a lot of chickens in a short period of time. So, what you will see after tonight's meeting is periodically, I will talk about the chickens as a part of my city council, I'm sorry, my city manager's update, so that folks know that we're focused on this, and it continues to be a priority, but we're just not going to, to have the focus on it with a population of less than 15. As the chief says, these are the hard ones to catch, and they are not only being difficult, but they're quiet. You're not even hearing the roosters cluck when you go downtown. We, the chief and I were downtown not too long ago, and finally heard one. So, we are really pleased at the reduction in the population. So, again, thank y'all so much for the job that you've done, and we appreciate that hugely.
Council, any comments? Councilmember Ennis?
Chief, Amy, would you send me this particular page? I'd like to shoot it out to some of the people in the neighborhood. Rag on your efforts. Thanks.
Quick, quick question?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, just a brief question. I've been asked by at least two people that live out in the suburbs, how would they go about getting some of these chickens?
It's my understanding that y'all take names and telephone numbers. We have an active list, so if there's some folks that have an interest, if they will call Animal Control at the police department, she will put them on a list, because we always need people that are looking, and we are happy to keep a list in the event we have a need to relocate others.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. And for those of you at home, the reason Councilmember Ennis was looking for the report was because they've turned in their report 11 days ago, so our report has X's, that's in, you've seen in your packet, it doesn't have the latest numbers. So, this is the first time tonight that council has seen the latest numbers, which we totally understand, because you're wanting to give us the most recent information, but that, that's why Councilmember Ennis is asking for a copy of this slide. Any other comments or questions? Good job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to staff and board reports, we're on item 6A, receive monthly development update. Mr. Jones? Now, you can ask him about Home Goods.
Promise I'll get there quickly. So, this is just our mission statement for the benefit of those looking at the packet online, and our purpose statement. This is our counter activity from May through June 15th, actually. So, we had 230 counter, or counter visits, 93 permits issued, and 18 pre-application meetings, and you can see our numbers fiscal year to date. New COs, we've issued two new COs at Hunter's Crossing Apartments, building three and four, so they're still moving along. And then we issued a new business on Pine Street, it's the Silver Spur, and from what I hear, they have some of the best bath products on the market. So, if you're in the market, go check out Silver Spur on Pine Street. Again, ongoing commercial projects, stem and stone, they're going along, they're almost complete, I would say they're probably 30 to 45 days out. Home Goods, everybody's favorite. From what I hear, from how they're communicating to us, they are trying to be open by the end of July. So, we'll work with them, and hopefully have those open in, in ready time to do some school shopping for your homes.
And if you see Councilmember Rogers or City Manager Umble, I would not step in front of them.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I would not interrupt that.
Well, I was out there today, and I saw a little name card with our city manager's name for the night before they opened, so she was already first. I'm just kidding. Seaton Hospital, they're about 65% complete, again, scheduled to open this fall. The mini storage there on 71, just down from the hospital, they've, again, they have some of their concrete work, some of their drainage work, they have materials now dropped off on site, so we do anticipate them to go vertical here, here pretty soon. Oh, yeah, Lost Pines Professional Building, so again, they're going, they have the finished roof structure up, they've put some exterior walls up, and some of the other masonry on the, on the exterior, so again, they're, they're moving along as well. Nothing has changed from this, we haven't issued any new, any new plaits in Piccon Parker Pine Creek, and then I've given an update on where we are in the COs for the apartment buildings. Training, I actually graduated from the Certified Public Manager Program.
Round of applause for Mr. Jones.
In June, thank you very much, I appreciate that. It's about a two-year project for me in the making, I took a break and came back and-
And I want to say, that's actually how I met Matt. I taught Matt a couple of classes in CPM in Dallas, and that's how we made the connections.
That's right. So, anyway, that, that happened this past, this past month. Some of the events, the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, they, we did some employee diversity training, and as well as we had the pop-up event on June 9th, so that's a picture of some of our, our staff there, the pop-up event. And I think this has already been said, but I'll take the opportunity to say it again, please come out, June 26th, for our open house at the, Bastrop Opera House at 711 Spring Street. For developers, that's gonna be from 3:30 to 5:00, and then for general public, it's 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. So, please, if you've not made it out to 1:00, or you want to make it again, we will all be there and ready to talk building Bastrop code.
And I would clarify for folks that both of those meetings are intended to be come and go, so if you can't be there right at 6:30, you don't think you're walking into a meeting late?
Right. Yes, yeah, please come. And, and that's all I have this evening.
Why don't you explain what come and go is, is intended to answer questions?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we'll have the information set up in the Opera House, different tables, we'll kind of have different stations for different topics, and then we'll have staff and others available to answer questions. So, freely come and go, this is the set times dinnerly, but please, if you can't make it, you know, don't feel like you cannot come at 6:30, or you cannot come at 3:00. Whenever you can make it, we'd love to have you, and like you, like the mayor said, it's not, you're not gonna interrupt anybody. There's no formal presentation, this is again, intended to give information, and receive feedback, and move forward with the code, so.
And if folks have specific feedback or concerns, they should feel free to bring something in writing that would be helpful for us as well.
Absolutely, and we have comment cards available also, so if you haven't filled one out before, feel free, bring that again, and we're tracking all that information that we receive.
Terrific. Councilmember Rogers?
I have two questions. One question on your numbers, that, like your counter visits?
Yes.
How is that, I mean, the numbers look great, that's easy, but how, do you know how that compares to last year, about that time? Are we getting as many as we got last year? Do we get, are we ahead of what we're normally seeing? What do you think?
I don't know the answer to that question, but it's, it's data we have, it's metrics we track, and so, we can go back and check on that.
I was just curious. And I had one other question that a citizen asked me about on a new hospital, will they have a helicopter plaid?
A helipad?
Okay, yeah.
I believe they did approve one prior to my arrival, so yeah.
I just wanted to make sure there's somebody that asked me that, I wanted to, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure I was answering correctly, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Ennis?
When do we get to meet your beautiful wife?
Councilmember Ennis?
Some of you had the pleasure at the Great Places in Texas dinner, she was there, and-
Well, he put it in tonight's presentation, the picture of you and your wife with your certification.
I did have family there supporting me, so I-
It's so he can see his family.
My lovely wife, that's right.
With the hours that he's working, he's got to put pictures in, so he remembers what his wife looks like.
Certainly married up, I appreciate that.
And she was with you at the pop-up, no, Matt Lewis's wife was with him at the pop-up. Councilmember Jackson?
Just a point of clarification for this, the meeting that's, that's on tomorrow, it's come and go, I just want to make sure the product, that I'm, if I come and go, is it gonna be posted because of the possibility of council members, or is that not necessary?
We don't post your participation, because you're not being asked to actively engage in answering the questions. We, most of the time, with the exception of probably the mayor, most people come and go, they might stay an hour. We work hard to make sure that y'all aren't together, and it's just, really, your role is to thank people for coming, if they want to engage, that's fine, but if they have a question, it's been our practice that we pass them off to the planning staff or to the consultants.
Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, ma'am.
Good job. All right, we're moving on to item 6B, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending May 31st, 2019. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, council, mayor. This report is over May 2019. This slide is just giving you a very quick overview of all of our major funds. The indicators are up, everything that I looked at, US retail sales is the only one trending down. Overall, in our revenue fundings, we have a couple of funds that are running in a negative or warning status, our impact fees, electric fund, and also the cemetery. On the expense side, the only fund that's running not positive is the Hunter's Crossing pit, and this will actually clear up after the budget amendment is approved this evening, so I just wanted to point that out. The general fund, revenue and expenditure is positive, forecast actual at this point. I've given you all some highlights and warnings in my notes, as far as what we're watching and what we're, what's trending. Sales tax is above forecast, it's running at about 1.5% over our forecast. On the property tax, almost, almost dead even to the forecast we've put in the budget, and we may see a little bit more come in, but as you can see, you know, this was the last month we really forecasted any income from current taxes. The water wastewater fund is a positive 3%, we're running over where we forecasted for that fund. The revenue is just slightly below the forecast. And on the electric fund, it's a positive almost 3% forecast actual. This revenue is in a warning status, I, I put a few notes in, we are, are down on our consumption in this fund, so we're gonna continue to watch that and monitor it. The hot fund overall is at a 14% forecast actual, and on the revenue side of that fund, this is just the hot tax revenue in that fund, we are over about 3% of our forecast, but I, I have been monitoring just kind of year over year, we're about $30,000 behind where we were last year.
Ms. Waldron, where are we on the consultant that was gonna do the auditing on the-
We are, we have, the contract has been signed, I'm actually waiting to get it back from them, but we are working on setting up the administrative portal right now.
Okay.
So that we can send the letters out to all of the paying hotels, and get that rolling with them, reporting online.
Okay, thank you.
And then here's our breakout of our legal. Any questions for me?
Council, any questions, Ms. Waldron? Councilmember Rogers?
Great report, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to item 6C, update on Main Street Advisory Board. Ms. Gleason?
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, city manager. I am here this evening to give you an update on our Main Street Advisory Board. Last year, our Main Street Advisory Board hit our 10-year anniversary, and so, as you can imagine, the Bastrop that the program serves today is very different from the Bastrop it served 10 years ago. Because of that, since I started in January, we've been working with the Texas Main Street Program to do a re-envisioning process with our board, which has led to us making a few changes that we hope will allow our program to be even more successful, and create a thriving Main Street district. So, we worked with the Texas Main Street Program to, number one, go back to the basics, and we looked at our foundation. So, we reviewed our vision, our mission, our core values, we wanted to go back to the beginning, and remember why we were created, and make sure that that was still the, that was still the forward process that we were making. Secondly, we took all of the data that we've been collecting for years, and wanted to create something that we could actually make into an action plan. So, from that action plan, we looked at our committee breakout, and we made some changes there, so in July, we'll be rolling out our new committees. Our foundation, when we went back to our core, we realized that although the Bastrop that we serve is very different, our vision and our mission is pretty similar, that we were still wanting to, still to do the same things, we were still hoping to accomplish the same mission, so our mission statement just changed slightly, we just shortened it. So, it had all the core pieces that was in our last mission statement, we just wanted something that was bite-sized, that we could point to, and that we could share with the community, and say, "This is what we do, this is who we are, and this is why we're here." The vision statement remained untouched, we found that our vision was exactly the same as it was 10 years ago, and our core belief used to be called core values, but we felt like core belief really fit us better, so although the statement itself has not changed, the title did, we changed it from core value to core belief. So, our mission statement, again, is the only thing that changed, it now reads, "The City of Bastrop Main Street Program Through Community Partnership and Grassroots Community Involvement Will Be a Stimulant for the Economic Health Design and Promotion of the Historic Main Street District." The next part of our re-envisioning was mind mapping. As y'all are aware, we at the City of Bastrop have been creating and collecting data for a very long time, and so, we wanted to ensure that we were really making good use of that data. So, we went back to several different places, gathered that data, and put it all in one place, so that way we could really create an action plan. We used the City of Bastrop Comprehensive Plan, created by y'all, the Bastrop DNA Analysis that we had done, the big idea that, which was done with, to collect community input, the City of Bastrop Organizational Work Plan, and then we looked at trends throughout Texas and national Main Street programs. We took all of that data, all of those ideas, and we put them in one place and organized them under the Main Street's four-point approach. When we started looking at everything, we found that we had a problem that a lot of Main Streets across the United States were having, and that was that some of our committees under the four-point approach had a lot of work to do, and so, it created a deterrent from people volunteering, because they were taking on a huge mission. And so, what the Main Street Program now suggests is going to- And so what the Main Street Program now suggests is going to a more project-based approach. So the committees still follow, all under the four-point approach, but each community is then able to better divide their work by the committees that makes sense for them. This allows multiple things. Number one, we're just taking smaller bites of the elephant. Number two, it allows volunteers to pick a committee that's better suited to their likes. So for instance, if someone was part of the Economic Vitality Committee, they were doing things across the spectrum, when they may just be interested in one part of it. So breaking it up really allows us to hone in on people's interests and people's strengths. It also is not as big of a commitment. So we're hoping to attract volunteers because we're no longer asking you to eat the entire elephant by yourself. We're just asking you to take care of this one little bite. So a lot of Main Street programs have seen success from that, and we're hoping to have the same. So from the four committees on the left, we went to four, nine committees, which you'll see on the right. You'll see them broken out under Organization Committee. We moved to two committees, Volunteers and Sponsors. So our Volunteer Committee will work both on recruitment and appreciation of our volunteers. Our Sponsors Committee will work on sponsorships and grants. From Economic Vitality, we moved to Business Retention, which is taking care of our current businesses in the district, ensuring that they know that it means a lot to us, that they're part of our district, and making sure that they're successful. Also, Business Expansion. This is where we hope to decrease the vacancy rates downtown and really focus on bringing in some businesses that will make an impact on our community fabric downtown. The Design Committee remained the same. And then from Promotions, we broke it out into our four sponsored events we do each year. So that will, as you can imagine, our events are an enormous undertaking. So instead of putting them all on one committee, it will allow volunteers to pick the committee that they want to be a part of and the event that they'd like to help put on. So far this year, while all of this re-envisioning has been going on, business as usual has had to happen. We've had to continue operations. So we've had a busy year thus far. We have hosted several events. So the first was the Meet and Greet, where we invited our Main Street businesses to come down and meet me as the new Main Street Manager. We had breakfast, and it was just a really great get-to-know-you type thing. We invited over 200 businesses. We also had an L.C.R.A. Steps Forward Day, which was a lot of fun. L.C.R.A. came out and volunteered along with our Main Street Board to paint trash cans. So you may have noticed that our trash cans downtown were a nasty black. They're now a beautiful green. So they came out great, and we had a great day with them, and it was a lot of fun. We also had our SIP Shop and Swirl, which was a great event. I think the best part of that event was that we had over 30 volunteers. So it was really a great opportunity for the community to get together and both volunteer and attend. We also worked with the Chamber, and for Small Business Week, we did the You've Got Mail Love Letters to our downtown businesses. So that will be a yearly thing that we do. We had Table on Main at the end of April. So that was another great opportunity for the community to come together and break bread. And lastly, just a few weeks ago, we had our Summer in the City event, which was coupled with the Building Bastrop pop-up. So that was a great opportunity for Bastrop to come out, enjoy our Main Street district, enjoy some music, enjoy some art, and see the codes come to life. From our events, I wanted to give a quick recap on our revenue generating events. We've had two this year. Those numbers are pretty tiny, so let me look at my notes.
And this wasn't in the packet, right?
It was not in the packet, no.
I just, I didn't want folks at home looking for the packet because they're not going to find it.
Sure, no, I'm sorry. We were still waiting on invoices from Table on Main. So for SIP Shop and Swirl, we had, sorry, I printed this super tiny. Colin, can you zoom in on those numbers for me? Yay, thank you. So for SIP Shop and Swirl, our cost was $9,914. Our revenue was $7,591, which led us short about, yeah, $2,323. And that really came down to our, we attempted to plan and execute and promote SIP Shop and Swirl within four weeks. I got here at the beginning of January, and the event was at the beginning of February. So we just weren't able to get the number of attendees we were hoping for. And so after each event, we do what's called a post-mortem. It's the good, the bad, and the ugly. And it gives us an opportunity to come together and see what we can do better, what we can do more efficiently, and how we can be a better steward of our resources for next year. So I think that just showed us that we absolutely cannot put together a swirl within four weeks and get the numbers that we're looking for. So we know that we need 200 attendees to break even for swirl. And so of course, next year, we'll be starting much earlier to ensure that we have ample time to promote that event. Our next generating, revenue generating event was Table on Main. So Table on Main cost us $13,863, and we brought in $19,000.
Yeah, you're...
Sorry, I'm missing a number. It's $19,000. So right now, we're up $5,225. I'm still waiting on one invoice for Table on Main, which should be $1,000 or less. So that one was able to generate more revenue. The way we did that is we make more money off sponsorships than we do off ticket sales. So we were able to do a really great job for that event in bringing in a lot of strong community sponsors to put together that event and...
Ms. Gleason, you said you had a $1,000 invoice, so your growth is going to go down by 1,000?
Yes, ma'am. It's probably going to be less than 1,000, but it will be, maximum will be 1,000. So that's my last invoice that's outstanding for Table on Main. Once that invoice comes in, we'll do a report out on that event to our board, which we do after every event, where they get a little packet with the numbers. In addition to putting on our own sponsored events, the Main Street Program helps with lots of other events that occur both in and outside of our district. We work closely with Visit Bastrop. They bring in a lot of groups, and so our goal, of course, is to get their groups downtown, shopping in our district, eating in our district, experiencing our district. So we work closely with them on that. We also do the local arm of promoting their events. For instance, we just had the Bastrop Music Fest, so we handled all the local advertisement for that because they bring in some groups that do some really cool things, and we want our citizens and our community to also enjoy that. So we handle that local advertising for them. We also help events that close Main Street. So anytime we close Main Street, the Main Street Program gets involved to ensure that our businesses downtown are well taken care of, that they've been communicated with, and that we're doing everything in our power to make sure that their businesses are being promoted during that time and aren't suffering. I have done lots of training since I've been in this position, both with the National Main Street and the Texas Main Street. I've been to Main Street 101 twice, actually. I went to the Real Places Conference in Austin by the Texas Historical Commission, Main Street Now by the National Main Street, and I just got back from Texas Main Street Summer Professional Development that was in Mount Pleasant. Coming up in October, we have, my last conference of the year will be in Georgetown, Texas, and that's for the Texas Downtown Association. I also, in addition to a lot of training, I do a lot of reports. So I do a weekly operational update to y'all. I've started doing a monthly Main Street Board Report out, so my board is well versed in everything that I'm working on. I do a monthly Texas Main Street Report, a quarterly Texas Main Street Reinvestment Report, the Annual Texas Commission on the Arts Report, and then I also have an annual report to our Texas Main Street that will be due at the end of the year. I think the, one of the most powerful things that I've encountered since I've been here in Bastrop is the number and the degree of participation that we have in community organizations. I have been so impressed by just the sheer number of community organizations we have and their willingness to step up and get involved, and the events they put on, and the causes that they rally for. So we've been able to make a lot of community partners thus far. These are the people that we've officially partnered with. With that being said, this is no, in no means an exhaustive list. We want to continue to add partners to that and continue working with new organizations that, where we can create a commission. So the next steps. It's been a very busy first six months. The next six months, the, one of the biggest things we need to do is we need to relaunch our re-envisioned Main Street Board and Program. So that means we are recruiting board members, we're recruiting committee members. If I've ever had the opportunity to meet you, if I've ever made eye contact with you, I'm coming for you to be on one of our committees, because we have nine of them to fill. But we're really excited about it, and we're really excited about the work that we've put in to get to this stage. So we think it's going to really be a great thing. We have a Board and Commission Volunteer Fair coming up. We know that's another great opportunity to meet people and recruit. We have started the conversations on Lost Pines Christmas, which is super exciting, and then of course, the Main Street Rehabilitation Project, which we have around the corner. So that is all I have for you this evening. So any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. Any questions? Councilmember Jackson?
I just want, this re-envisionment is something that I'm excited to see. I didn't know all the changes that occurred. As you know, I was on the first Main Street Board that we had here 10 years ago, and with the four core values that we used, and to see them expanded, it gives all of the board much more participation and more flexibility. And I just wanted to thank you for, you and the board, for what you've done with that. It looks, I mean, from reading the packet and kind of observing a little bit of what's happened, it's really an improvement over what we had before. Whereas on the promotions area, we had the Downtown Business Alliance, but now you've got specific activities and things, and it just seems like it works out really well. One quick question, and I don't know if I should ask it now or not, but it's kind of out of the Main Street area, but the Burleson Crossing marquee that is out there that is used for publicizing events which happen downtown and other places, I was told that the Chamber was working with that, but they're having some difficulty in getting the marquee kept up to speed, and I think they're depending on different organizations to do that. And so I'm, I don't know if the organizations are aware of that, and I was going to talk to the City Manager about maybe seeing if there's some way that we can become more involved with that, since the developer gave it to the city to utilize to make sure and promote activities downtown and within our area. And I hate to see it not being utilized to its full potential.
I apologize. I don't know anything about that marquee specifically, but I will be happy to look into it and talk to the Chamber and find out what I can and see if that's not something that we can't be a part of.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, I actually have a, the question for the City Manager. I know that during the budget time last year, we talked about the different events that are put on that the city would, you know, start charging them for their police departments, and not that I want Main Street to pay for it, but I was wondering if, if in her budgeting or in her reports, she could say what it would have costed, so we know it's not so much of a profit if our city was still paying for all the police and the public service. See what I'm saying? So we can get a realistic number of how much money she actually brought into the city. Do you understand my question?
You're going to get a realistic list of hers and a whole lot of others. I think Chief, you've got that August or September timeframe?
Yes, ma'am.
The chief working with Victoria Pincheck has been tracking the time, the time spent, equipment used for every event that has gotten a permit that we've created an action plan for. And part of what's in the chief's work plan is revising our special events permit and recommending to y'all fees and rates so that we can adequately charge for the cost that it's impacting us. So in that conversation, these events will be included.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question a different way? You said that the Table on Main cost was $13,863, but that does or does not include police, your time, the convention center staff, the...
No, ma'am, that's hard costs.
Exactly, that's what I was trying to get to.
Those are things you actually wrote a check for.
Correct.
Right, and that way we would get a better, if we knew kind of what those, what those costs would have cost, then we would get a better idea of what the, the actual profit made was, even though when, you know, the city still didn't make this much profit because it still spent money in the other areas, is what I was trying to get at. Thank you, Mayor, for re-asking my question.
Absolutely, yes. And as the City Manager mentioned, we have been tracking those items. So Victoria and Chief are working on that report, so you can get a picture of those costs as well. The costs included tonight were just hard costs.
Okay. I have one more question, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
On the pop-up, the Summer in the City?
Mm-hmm.
I know that, oh, there was fabulous art, there was chalk, there was all sorts of things. We did reach out to our local artists, is that correct, to do those and stuff?
We did have, we partnered with the Lost Pines Art Center, and they did provide us artists for two of our murals that were put in at the Visitor Center Museum and First National Bank.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
I just wanted to also point out that with the hard costs, I mean, the expenses are the ones that are actually, that usually, like you said, you write the check for too, but there are other benefits, of course, with, because of the tourism, because of the gas, the shopping and all that, that are, that aren't really counted in that, and they could be figured in some way to the expenses and the income that's brought in because of some of these events also.
Yes, sir. One of the requirements that the special events that are paid for and promoted through hot funds now are routed through Visit Bastrop, and one of the benefits, to your point, is the fiscal impact analysis that they can do to track the heads and beds. What we've tried to do is the ones that we know are really for our citizens, we've taken out of that mix, so we don't mix that. But one of the things that I know Rebecca's working with Susan Smith at Visit Bastrop is to have a better coordination of all of that. There's also a community partner group that includes Visit Bastrop, the Opera House, the museum, Lost Pines Art Center, and I believe Rebecca sits in that along with Kathy, so that we can leverage that investment and make sure that at the end of the day, we're getting the biggest bang for our buck.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, taking that into consideration because that's a big part of it also.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. One, while we're on the subject, another breakout I would like to see is on the revenue. I'd like to know who the sponsors were. It's my understanding that Visit Bastrop bought a table, the Convention Center bought a table. So there, we need to be clear about money that has come in and money that, from a citizen's standpoint, we're not moving it around amongst the buckets, so to speak. I am glad that you mentioned the, the Board and Commission Fair that's coming up. We would be remiss if we didn't mention that Jennifer Long is on the board and is here in the audience with us, because that board of nine has five vacancies. So I know there are some hard-working folks. Terry, Jennifer, Candace, and Sean are the current board members. So I know you'll be doing what you can to round up some more board members at the Board and Commission Fair. So if you're in the audience and any of this sounds exciting, or you want to spend some time with Ms. Gleason, I would encourage folks to do that.
Any other questions for Ms. Gleason? Councilmember Ennis?
Just to say, good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for the information. We, we make good decisions when we've all got good information, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, good job. We are at Citizen Comments. Madam Secretary, we don't have anyone signed up for Citizens Comments, so we are running to the Consent Agenda. I've been asked to pull item 8B. There were some clarifying questions, so the Consent Agenda is item 8A and 8C. Madam Secretary, if you'll read 8A and 8C, and then we will take 8B for individual consideration.
The Consent Agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve City Council minutes from the June 11th, 2019, regular meeting, and June 18th, 2019, special meeting. Item 8C...
Tracy, turn on your mic. We can't hear you. Do you have a copy of the agenda, Councilmember Jackson?
Okay. Do you want me to reread it? Just... Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-22 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending a Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Fee Schedule, Article A 13.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges. Sections A 13.02.002, Wastewater Service Charge, and A 13.02.004, Water Service Charge, adding new subsections A 13.02.002 (C), and subsection A 13.02.004B, as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, enactment, repealer, severability, effective date, codification, and proper notice and meaning.
Thank you so much, Madam Secretary. Council, you have two items before you for consent. Happy to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion...
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Items 8A and 8C are approved. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2019-21 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2019 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron, I'm, I think Councilmember Ennis may have a question for you, and this can go fairly quick. Councilmember Ennis?
I noticed that you took out the Street Maintenance Fund because of our actions last meeting. There's no backup in this week's agenda entry for the grant fund. It's listed in the staff report, but it's...
Oh, the, on the exhibit? There's no exhibit?
Yeah.
Okay. I may not have grabbed it when I was putting it.
I, I thought you were referencing that the staff report doesn't include the Innovation Fund.
Well, it, 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 it doesn't on the staff report, but it, the backup is in there.
Okay. The only, okay.
When you took the street out, you took the innovation out also.
Off of, but it's in the exhibit.
But it's in the exhibits.
Attached to the ordinance, okay.
That's what kind of kicked me first. And then I found that the grants, the exhibit for the grants is not in there.
Okay. I can make sure that the exhibit is complete when it gets attached.
So since this is a box that we do to meet the financial policies, why don't we table this and you bring it back?
Okay.
So that they know very clear what is where.
Okay.
I'm not trying to catch you on anything. I just wanted to make sure we were legal in approving this.
Absolutely.
If something wasn't in the packet.
I will take a look at it.
Mayor and Council, I would ask that you table this until June 9th, or July 9th.
I have a mo, is that a motion, Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
I have a motion to table from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Before we vote on that, I want to make a further clarification on the Innovation Fund. It's my understanding there's been some discussion in the community that the 341,000, people think we're adding on to the building, and this renovation was, for lack of a better term, we are merely finishing out under the existing roof. We are doing what was originally planned when the building was done. So if we want to perhaps provide just a little bit of clarification for that, that might be helpful for the, for the public. Councilmember Jackson, did you have any?
No, I agree 100% because that's the conversation I've heard also. The people think that we're adding on to the building instead of the, you know, filling in the space that exists.
Tracy, will you make sure that you rewrite the report to use the words "finish out" and not, so we can clarify that, please? Thank you.
All right, Council, we have a motion to table item 8B and put it on the individual consideration item for the next council meeting. I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion or direction? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
All right, Council, thank you. We are on page three, moving to items for individual consideration. Are we, does anyone have a need for a quick break, or are we okay? All right, we're going to keep going. We're on item 9A, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance 2019-23 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the City of Bastrop to convey to Garments2Go Inc. at certain 6.0 acre real property legally described as Lot 3 Block A, Bastrop Business and Industrial Park, Phase 1 subdivision, located in Bastrop County, as set forth in Volume 908, Page 275 of the deed of records of Bastrop County, Texas, providing for the following: finding of facts, repealer, severability, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the July 9, 2019, Consent Agenda for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so as I stated in my report, this contract goes way back to 1995, a contract between Garments2Go and the city. There was a lease agreement. They have completed all 240 payments of that lease, and we have confirmed that they have met all the requirements of the agreement, and so we're bringing forth this recommendation to convey the property over to Garments2Go. I think I even have a map here of where the property is located.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waldron. Council, any questions?
So they've conveyed, they've met all the...
They've fulfilled the contract. I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve. I move to approve with a congratulations to them for doing a great job.
Excellent. I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers. I have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and I would like to include my congratulations to Garments2Go. It's outstanding to have a good business in the industrial park. We're moving to our last item for individual consideration, item 9B, consider action to approve the first reading to amend ordinance number 2019-16 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Attachment A 1A, No-Impact Projects, Enhanced Permitting Process, and Providing for Legislative Findings of Fact, Repealer, Enactment, Duration, Extension, Severability, Enforcement, Proper Notice and Meeting, Effective Date, Applicability, Alternate Approvals, Appeals, Definitions, and move to include on the July 9, 2019, Consent Agenda for a second reading, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to the ordinance for the enhanced permit review that you all approved on May 14th. Since processing some of these applications, staff has realized that we think there might be somewhat of a, of an error in transpondence on the ordinance. So if you look at the no-impact projects, it's a 1A, no-impact projects. In order to meet that, you have to not increase horizontal density, increase impervious cover greater than 5%, expand the footprint of an existing structure more than 5%, or alter the current drainage pattern. So that is, most projects in town do meet that, but those are simple calculations that are mathematical. And what it, what it says here is, it requires the same thing that a minimal drainage project does, which is a letter from a licensed engineer. And so we feel like that what we thought was the intent was that staff be able to do those calculations under no impact. But as it's written, we cannot, and we just wanted to bring back that clarification to you all before we made that determination. But in order to move forward processing those no-impacts for different minor projects that would really be a no-impact, staff could do that so long as they provide that, that documentation, and that's simply what it does. So the ordinance amendment before you tonight would just be removing from that one section a sealed letter from a licensed professional engineer and adding adequate documentation to the Planning and Development Department that the criteria listed above are satisfied, and then the city engineer shall make a final determination whether or not the application qualifies as no-impact. So that way, it would allow it at a staff level and not have us bring those before you for council approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Council, if you're looking at page 112, he did a great job of marking out in red and adding in blue what he's adding to it, and I concur that that was our intent. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
What form will that determination take? Does it sign off by the city engineer, or is that a formal letter or...
Say that one more time. I didn't hear the first one.
What format is that determination?
Sure, so it still requires the, the application meeting and all the documentation, so staff can come through and, and look at really most of those. If there's a question on maybe the drainage pattern, for instance, our city engineer can do a site visit and/or look at the documentation that the applicant provides and make that determination. But most of them are going to be straightforward, but in the event that they are not, he would have the final authority, which would send it back through the rest of this process.
Mayor Pro Tim, excuse me, Nelson, if the permit's approved, it'll be issued, and that will be the paperwork?
Councilmember Rogers?
So, just so I have clarification, so this is actually, the way we're rewording it is, is like the mayor said, is what our intent was, but that's to make it easier for the citizens when they're doing small jobs, is that correct? So we're taking out the big, hard letter.
It stream, it streamlines the process to an administration approval versus coming and having to get approval at city council.
And it also saves the citizens some money because they won't...
Saves them time, saves us time, saves you time.
But saves them money.
Yes, ma'am, it does, because that engineer's letter costs money. And that's what we were bumping into for something that really didn't make common sense to us, so that's why we're back before you.
Everybody realize that we're trying to help you.
Yes, ma'am.
Trying to help you and at the same time protect you, because if, if you, if our city engineer is requiring you to get a civil engineer to sign off on something, it's to ensure that your property doesn't flood and you're not flooding someone else. So, but to, you're putting in words what I think council's intent was, if it's a no-brainer, there's no point in the citizens having to spend extra money.
Yes, ma'am.
Great clarification. Councilmember Jackson?
I concur completely, because while I was on the campaign trail and earlier to that even, there were so many people that were concerned about that, the cost factor, we're getting the engineer's letter or something, for something like a fence, chain link fence even and things like that, it was costing them extra money just to do that. But I think this is an excellent revision, and I'm so happy to see that happen.
Councilmember Jackson, I would caution you to imply that all fences don't require an engineer's letter, because there can be instances where a fence may indeed require that.
That's correct. The fences are spoken to, yeah.
I said chain link fences, I think that was stated in my...
I think we've had problems with, it, it depends on the topography and the other things around it. So I just don't want us to have a blanket, these, these type of situations, because we've gotten into some hairy ones, have we not, Mr. Jones?
We have, we have. There, there's a different process for most fences, as long as they don't obstruct a drainage way. But to your point, a chain link fence would probably not impede, impede the flow, whereas if it has a solid masonry base or something like that, it could. So it's not always as black and white, but yes, there, we're, we're improving that process for where it makes sense for people.
Well, there are just so many citizens that were concerned about that, I'm just glad to see it's being addressed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Ordinance number 2019-16 is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Council will be going into executive session to discuss the following two items. 10A, City Council shall convene in de-closed executive session pursuant to Sections 551.071, 072, and 087 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the Visit Bastrop contract with the city attorney. And item 10B, City Council shall convene in de-closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. It is 818, and we are in executive session. It is 8:37, and we are back in regular session. We are going to item number 11. On item 10A, there will be no action taken on item 10B regarding the real property. We can have a conversation or a motion about item 10B.
Madam Mayor, pursuant to our discussion in executive session, I move to approve the purchase of .367 acres of land in Bastrop County to be used as an asset to Fairview Cemetery, and authorize the city manager to execute that purchase contract or related documents in accordance with the terms discussed in executive session.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson to purchase the .36 acres of land in a second by Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.